Monday, October twenty first, two thousand and twenty four, regular meeting of the Windsor Heights City Council, roll call.
Joseph Jones. Michael Libby.
Here.
Lauren Campbell.
Here.
Teresa Harms.
I'm just so jealous of that.
Here.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Give the flag.
Space America. Into the public, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, approval of the agenda. Roll call.
Susan Skirrius?
Yes.
Michael Libby?
Yes.
Lauren Campbell?
Yes.
Teresa Harms?
Yes.
Adam three, public forum, this is a time set aside for comments from the public on topics of city business other than those listed on the agenda. No action may be taken, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and keep your comments to no more than five minutes.
Bob Bishop, one one two eight sixty four Street. There's an old adage. A picture's worth a thousand words, and I apologize, Teresa, didn't know you'd be missing.
I'll give you a pass, Bob.
I'll, I'll send you, I'll send it to you real quick, Teresa.
So there's actually two pictures, that'd be two thousand words, but I have very few, do you have any questions?
Which ones the before and which ones the after?
Before is on the left, after is on the right.
Okay.
That was just finished last week. They. Landscaping will be next.
So you said, sorry, before is on the left, after is on the right, or did I?
Correct, before is on the left with the water. There is no water there now, finally, on the right.
Can I ask a question about the before?
Sure.
Um, roughly what date was this before picture taken?
That date was roughly late June, early July.
Just wondered where.
It was after we had about, hmm, there was two days there in a row of rain, and that pretty much filled it, and it's only that area right there was draining, and the old parking lot that was up there from the church always drained there, so that was the only thing going in there at that point in time. But it was functioning as a temporary detention basin. It is now on the right. Well, yet to be seen, a functioning detention basin, as opposed to retention, excuse me, on the left, where it was holding it.
What's that structure there on the right hand? Image that's there in the background, not the buildings, but.
So the structure on the right is the detention basin itself with the, on the very, and the foreground is where the water comes in. In the foreground, what you're actually looking at is two different things, where the water goes out through a drain, and then there's an overflow, that, that little structure is the overflow.
Looks a little dry.
Yeah, so this was all shown in the June approval of the, of the site plans over there, they just didn't, didn't mention that there'd be a temporary detention basin there. Any other questions?
Those are fast, Bob.
Well, it wouldn't, you know it's not gonna go that fast. So, as, as everyone knows, bodies of water that are stagnant are a public health hazard. That basin had water in it from April until they finished it a couple weeks ago. And then to say I am disappointed in the city's response in addressing that with the developer is an understatement. The other thing I would like to say is, to accept that as a Parkland dedication is misguided. And lastly, just a simple request. The next time you're up at Hy-Vee, look at how many trees are planted on the north side of that parking lot to create an opaque barrier. There's a tree every ten feet, so when you look at a drawing of plans and how many trees, it looks nice, but that might be thirty years from now. Now you can see what it looks like in thirty years when you plant a tree every ten feet. It's an excellent example of what's required to create an opaque barrier. And it does a wonderful job for those neighbors to the north of shielding them from that area. With that, I'd like to thank the council for their time.
Mr. Bishop, thanks for bringing this to our attention, I haven't walked back up that far towards this in the view that you have here, and I don't know if Bolton Mink was aware of the standing water, or if it was brought to the city's attention, but you know, I think having a plan in place for, I don't think the intent for the design is to retain water, like you said, in the future, but.
So there's, there's a good example, there's actually two of those up there now. So if you go up there, there's two of those. And the way that works is, we get an inch and a half of rain, it fills up, and then it empties out. You get another rain, it fills up, it empties out. Fills up, it empties out, because standing water is a public health hazard, so it needs to go out of there in a certain amount of time.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Councilmember Campbell, the imperfect solution that we worked through over the spring and summer, very wet spring and summer, is you can see a blue hose sticking outside of the water in this instance. The contractor had a, a pump and a two inch hose that went into a kind of a straw bale to kind of try to stop the sediment from coming out there, which had mixed results, but they did pump, I don't know, Bob, you were there ten, fifteen times maybe over.
Yep. Spring, summer. It just never emptied, and that was the, that's created a problem.
So we were trying to balance draining sediment onto the street, but also trying to reduce the water, it sounds like wasn't a wholly successful solution, but I will give the credit to the contractors, to some degree at least, that they were out there continuously pumping water, you could see it flowing down sixty four Street. Uh, but admittedly, not a perfect.
And in the end, they, they also, because there were other areas like that on the site, access to the storm sewer on University Avenue, and that picture that you have there was what was used to drain it. And from that point on, they use that, but the problem was, in my perception, that hose has to go right through the middle of that building, construction site, and that was a problem. So there were multiple issues.
Sure.
But the, the picture on the right now, it's all water under the bridge, or down the drain, however you put it, right?
Hopefully, hopefully, hopefully it's a problem that doesn't come back.
I, sure, so thank you.
And if you do see standing water, you'll let us know. Thank you.
Any other, uh, public comment? None, consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
Can I just add that we just need to change my twelve pizzas, because that would have fed like two people to a hundred and twenty, not twelve?
Yeah.
I mean, just, not that that's a big deal, but all big twelve pizzas, everybody gets a bite. Just don't chew.
Just pass it around.
Hopefully I don't get the crust.
You're referring to the minutes?
Uh, yes, sorry.
Yeah. With the editing to the minutes. Roll call.
Susan Skirrius?
Yes.
Michael Libby?
Yes.
Lauren Campbell?
Yes.
Teresa Harms?
Yes.
Uh, I'm five A, consideration of the retaining wall at seventy two fifty four El Rancho, AJ.
Okay, we've got a staff report for it on, on the agenda this time, Adam's gonna pull up the graphic that Bolton and Mink put together, I think that it's probably the easiest way to look at this. Uh, it's a little hard to read in the staff report there, it is included as an attachment in the agenda too, if you wanted to zoom in on anything, but on the right hand side, you can see, uh, labeled with the red arrow there, the corner retaining wall, uh, that we've, uh, approved the contractor to put in. Uh, and then I believe in the red, you can see on the left of that, towards the driveway, the slope as it was before, and in blue, the slope as proposed after the installation of the five foot sidewalk this fall. I mean, there's what, six or seven data points there, Justin, that, that shows some differential there. Some are bigger, some are smaller, um, and then you can also see at the last picture there of the staff report, it's just a picture pulled up from, uh, prior to construction beginning, you can see uh, the little bit of a hill and the little bit of an edge, uh, that exists on that sidewalk in the east side there, uh, hard to guess how much that is, but a few inches at least. You know, whether that's because the sidewalk sunk, or it was just kind of slopping off that hill, um, I'm not sure, but, uh, also don't have information on when that sidewalk was put in either, so presumably is a pretty old sidewalk that went in with the road at some point, but. Anyway, so we tried to give you the information, uh, let us know what you'd like to do as far as providing, uh, the fifteen hundred dollars worth of retaining block to the property owner for him to install, uh, that would come with uh, a document that identifies him as responsible for maintaining that. Uh, and if you'd like to do that, then the fifteen hundred dollars, we'd suggest allocating out of road use tax, as opposed to the seventy third street project, as we talked about last time. Uh, that's all the information I have for you, unless, Justin, you have anything else you want to add?
No, thank you, that's why I didn't answer his questions.
The photo that we're looking, showing the previous condition. I mean, are there going to be parts that are equal to or potentially I don't know, steeper than this?
Yeah, I think there's one that's a percent or greater.
You look at, um, historical photos on, uh, Google, yes, it definitely did, um, sink, well, I guess I don't know. Somehow the sidewalk no longer is leveled with the, with the lawn between two thousand and ten and twenty nineteen, however that came to be, certainly isn't level over time, so.
So what is the, the plan if if we don't provide the, well, let's not even, what was the plan on how to handle the steep cliff or difference, or however you want to word it, prior to anything happening, what, we were just gonna grade it, and how was, how was it gonna kind of come back, because I've always said, you know, if we're gonna do construction, then I, the, what we should do is, is at least make it make your yard back to the way it was before, or put it in better condition after we came through with whatever road project we're doing. So I'm just curious what we, what our plans were exactly, I know that, I thought we said grading, but I just want to make sure that I understand completely, because I did go there, and it is kind of steep. There's, I mean, I think I could have stood there and maybe like lost myself, so I, I just want to understand.
Yeah. The intent was to grade it. I always warn before it's actually graded to, it's always looks worse than what it actually will be. Would have been worse than what it was, probably, how much, I don't know. But yes, it was to grade it out. So we only get in within the right of way, so that's where our plans were. So whether that's considered worse or better than before, I don't, I mean, everything I consider mowable is twenty five percent or less on a slope wise, so that's kind of how we usually to shoot for, whether we need to put a retaining wall in or not.
And the resident's going to utilize the material and do it himself, if I understand correctly.
That would be, yeah.
That's, that was his proposal to the city to minimize the city's cost, if the city would provide the material, uh, he would install it, I think the staff recommendation is if if that's the direction things go, then we'd probably want to sign an agreement that just states that he has responsibility over that section of the retaining wall at least going forward, um, but I think the entirety of the retaining wall would become the property owners to maintain after it's installed, is, is how we typically try to address these.
Well, it would be anyway, because it's on his property, yes?
No.
No?
It's in the right of way, if we move it back to the property line, the wall just gets taller.
Very tall.
What, tell me what the, um, what's the greatest slope? What will it be? You said anything less than twenty five percent is mowable, what is this one going to be without, without a retain?
Can't read. It's like nineteen, nineteen point two, twenty two point three, nineteen seventeen, am I reading that right?
Yeah, there's, there's six or seven data points along that stretch between the corner retaining wall and the driveway, and it, and it does vary between the high teens and the, the low twenties.
At least some yards get steeper than that, but it's kind of generally what we try to shoot for.
Was the previous sidewalk?
Thanks.
The road?
Sorry, Lauren.
I mean.
I don't know what I have. I think that road along the curb is built, built up of sand and salt and whatnot over the years, so if you drive down the part we haven't started on, it's generally the dirt's a few inches above the curb right now.
Okay.
I think just a buildup of dirt and grit over the time, so I don't have that information in front of me.
That's fine, that's fine. I, I just, when I walked out there, the it's a big cliff right, right now, but trying to, just trying to visualize like the side cut of what that's gonna look like. And I think there's like a little bit of a uphill right now on that, like from El Rancho, right, like there's a little before it was torn out, there was kind of an incline up to the sidewalk, and I'm guessing it's probably gonna be more level, right?
Yeah, so what the issue is with that corner, we labeled where the old curb was in the roadway and the new curb, so widen that out, so people don't always drive over the curb, especially dump trucks and other things, it just made it suck into the property a little bit farther, so that's where you lost all your grade, and it's the same thing with the sidewalk, I mean, the sidewalk's a foot or so closer to the property, so that's why you see the ends of the red and blue aren't the same, so we took the, the starting points the same, but then moved it to where the sidewalk was before, and then what the sidewalk is now, just kind of compare apples to apples.
Have we provided, or have we done retaining walls as we did sixty fourth or Delmatro, or any of those other streets, did we do it for a less than or even college, less than twenty, the twenty five percent grade?
Your test of my memory. I guess I can't remember. Off the top of my head.
Anything, what was, what about sixty fourth and University, like right at that corner? There was something.
I think all those were there. We put, uh, we put a retaining wall on sixty eighth Street last year. That was more so for a tree and whatnot, I believe. But some of those yards get pretty steep, I can't, I think those retaining walls at sixty fourth and University were already there, except for the sidewalk going up along there.
And sixty third, we put in a few.
Yeah. Yep.
But I don't know what.
Those were just because of the sidewalk, were nothing ever there, so we had that flat spot there.
Okay, um, this is a matter of fifteen hundred dollars, and, um, it's a, it's a yard, and it, it looks like prior to this, it had a bit of a lip in it, and I assume it's going to be smoothed out?
Yeah, if it's not, yeah, once the sidewalk gets put in, yep.
Okay, uh, but it'll be a lot steeper now? Not a lot, but it'll be steeper now?
Uh, not in some of those instances, actually.
Okay. All right, um, so if, um, someone could either make a motion or, uh, not, we could move on.
I'll make a motion to, to pay for the, the fifteen hundred dollars, and just make sure that they sign whatever legal agreements you talked about. I, I don't really want to set precedent, but on this, but I, I do think that it's it's a steep hill, and as somebody who mows, I can feel for them.
Yeah, I'll second that, and I think that if you, the homeowners made a pretty passionate request, and I think it's fair.
All right, there's a motion and a second, is there further?
Aaron, or before for it is my, I agree. Aaron, I know there's potential new case law in this space, can you remind us, particularly because this will be in the right of way? I think that makes us then liable for this, or no, is that regardless of what the agreement says?
Yeah, the case law would not be impacted by the agreement. Sorry.
You're welcome.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you, yeah.
Yeah, so the case. We don't exactly know what the new case law is going to do for our cities, we do know that, um, the general approach is we're not changing ordinances, we just know that there's uh, potential for additional liability, but, um, I don't think the, the agreement itself would not change anything with the case law.
So you're, I just want to make sure I understand, so if, if the homeowner says they're taking responsibility for it, that, then that becomes then the responsibility of the homeowner?
Well, the retaining wall is different than the sidewalk, so the case law was specific sidewalks. Um, so if we're gonna make sure that the retaining wall, uh, becomes their responsibility to maintain, I think we're still within the parameters of what that case law says.
Okay, I just want to verify that, thank you.
Yep.
Further discussion? Roll call.
Susan Skirrius?
Yes.
Michael Libby?
Yes.
Lauren Campbell?
Yes.
Teresa Harms?
Yes.
Five B, consideration of two thousand and twenty four sixty four, a resolution approving the creation of fire department lieutenant. AJ or chief?
That kind of guy there on the beach.
James Mace, fire chief with the Windsor Heights Fire Department, uh, mayor of council, making sure you're time tonight, uh, as I discuss, uh, my proposal for a career lieutenant's position. Yeah, in assessing destruction weaknesses of the department on a continual basis, a common thread comes up, and that's formal leadership, formal leadership standardized in the fire service, uh, multiple layers to make sure that we have continuity and a line between line staff and department heads. Uh, I've discussed this potential with, uh, full-time staff, uh, they have expressed a need and a want for a lieutenant's position, um, and obviously is something that I feel is a need, or I wouldn't be discussing it tonight. Um, essentially, uh, broad strokes on this would be, uh, utilizing existing staff to fill a career lieutenant's position. What I'm looking for is, in my absence, we have a definitive person who is in charge while I'm not here, and we also have someone that is familiar with administrative tasks that I take care of daily, that we should not be assigning to line staff, whether that's for confidentiality agreements, budgets, stuff like that. Um, I have weighed the pros and cons essentially for a position like this. Uh, benefits, uh, before I brought this, uh, I just want to make it clear that I have a uh, big concern for our taxpayers and the money that's given to the fire department, and I didn't want to approach this unless I was able to find funding somewhere for it, which I was able to do to kind of our, counteract, uh, the potential cost for something like this, which is about ten thousand dollars. I was able to find out with Rick Rowe, we changed consultants for our GMP, um, if I just give you quick numbers, we were getting charged about fourteen thousand dollars, um, for the GMP process with our prior consultants. Chief Rowe is doing it for four thousand five hundred, so I think like cut costs there, which I would have done whether I was proposing this or not, obviously. I have talked with Chief Rowe, he's sort of in the process, but he's assured me that we're not gonna lose money with him doing it, we're actually gonna gain a little bit plus the ten thousand dollar savings. Promotional opportunity, uh, I also look at it as a retention effort, where we have steps that we can promote in-house, and if I could, uh, pick down the road when I'm no longer here, we have a candidate in-house that is vying for the position and not continuing, continuously relying on the outside for somebody. It'll allow for a broad range of coverage for incidents, uh, right now it's very difficult to, uh, try to hit everything we can. If we can share that workload a little bit with somebody else in staff who is trained and capable of handling major incidences, it sets us up in a better spot, whether that be flood mitigation, a house fire, large EMS incident, something like that. Gives the ability to allocate some of those administrative tasks. I handle virtually all of our administrative tasks, now keep in mind, our part-time staff do have tasks, make no mistake, there are things that they are required to take care of, but there are certain things that I will not allocate to them because it's not in their description, and it is definitely things that on another department, higher ranks can hold. Again, formal leadership, if I'm out of state, we have a good two person every time, currently what I do is I gauge the current full-time staff, is anybody available if I'm out of town, it's a very informal process, so, and again, we have six people to choose from if, if I'm not here. Uh, we do have a very strong part-time staff that I could potentially reach out for, but again, they're part-time staff. Um, and I'm looking at in-house succession planning again, I really think it's important that we are investing in our people, and we're creating leaders, and this would allow me to do that. Disadvantages, currently our full-time staff will exclude myself as six people. So, uh, do I think that we have people capable of doing this? Yes, or I would not be recommending it. Any promoted full-time employee would have to remain on their current schedule, uh, forty eight ninety six is what our full-time staff works. Uh, so that doesn't allow for correct oversight for every employee, but they do see each other at shift change, yes, sir? Oh, no question. Any promoted employee would be required to take a minimum of forty hours extra training, minimum for this job outside of just regular firefighter training, I want to develop somebody if this comes to fruition. So, in my review of this, in my research, uh, I, uh, contacted other fire chiefs getting pay scales, and a lieutenant's position is ten to fifteen percent bump. Uh, I would recommend that we, uh, increase to twelve percent, stay competitive with the position on the scale. Essentially what that means is an overall salary increase would be seventy seven hundred bucks to nine thousand two hundred bucks, in that range, depending on where they would fall in a, in a pay scale. Uh, I would recommend it remain a salary-based position, I don't think we would get buy-in if it was a, uh, if an hourly-based position, if we did a salary-based position, I think that I wouldn't get people who would want to apply just because they would feel like they might get called in every time that we were for somebody, so I would recommend if council approves that they would go with an hourly, uh, position. Preliminary preliminary review, uh, this was brought to the Public Safety Committee, uh, positive feedback with, uh, four recommendations to move forward. Uh, Personnel and Finance Committee was mentioned review with the recommendation to move forward. And it was also my recommendation that this position be a new position, and we would not fund the hole that is made with either a firefighter, paramedic, or a firefighter EMT. Questions, comments?
You know, from the corporate world, it's wise to have someone who's a second in command, simply because, you know, we don't know, chief, what's gonna happen tomorrow, and that's always wise to have that other person that you can rely on, um, and so, yeah, I'd, I'd be in favor of this, for sure.
Any other questions?
Um, oh, I just had a quick question, when uh the disadvantage we talked about the forty-eight ninety-six schedule. Um i- is there a, any opportunity that? You can give the other, the alternating shifts um exposure to the lieutenant or give them, give the lieutenant. Um an opportunity to work with them directly, thinking about the risk of the appearance of favoritism because. Who, who they're on shift with, yeah.
Yeah, one, one thing that we can do to combat that is we'll do company-wide trainings on Wednesdays or however they end up falling out and. I would want that lieutenant to be in a position of running something like that so they get to work with people. Um short of adding a complete new position, which I don't think it, we can even discuss right now. This is the best viable option that I could come up with, uh we could do shift changes here and there, but I wouldn't want to do that on a consistent basis because. What works out well now is we have people that are teamed up for forty-eight hours, then they have four days off, you build a. Very good crew integrity doing that.
Sure.
Uh but again, we have them extra things and depending on who it was. I'm going to assign administrative tasks based on their strengths, so I don't have anything specifically picked out of this were to come to fruition.
Sure.
It would depend on who they were, but training is definitely an aspect that they would be heavily involved in.
Yep.
You know, and making sure that that's the one way that we could kind of spread it around their leadership ability, so.
That's great.
And we do do overtime shifts and stuff, so there's potential that we could work together, just not.
Yeah.
Super frequent basis.
No, I, I get it, that makes sense, I think having um career pathing is really important for keeping. Um talent, attracting talent, retaining the, the talent that you have and um it sounds like it would um. Really help the department, so I'm in favor of it.
Teresa?
Sure, thank you, um so just for um. Um to be clear, there was no recommendation that came from the budget committee, we brought it forward, but there wasn't a recommendation for it. So it was a split vote, um and so I just, just a couple of things um for clarification, so I am not currently in. Um supportive of doing this at this time, it's not that I'm not supportive, nor do I see that there is um, you know, a need for this. But I think at the end of the day, this is something that needs to coincide, um even though it's quote-unquote not uh um adding a new staff person. It is um adding a significant cost to our budget, um yeah, I think it's. It's really bad and poor budgeting practices for us to take um a cost savings to our budget. And um transition that into an ongoing cost um to um that will continue to increase over time. To our, our budget, um and especially if we're, so I did have a question, chief, is the. Um the contract fee reduction in this calendar year, so is he paid a contract fee? Or is it a per, is it a percentage of each um uh call, each uh. Thing he brings back to the city, how does that contract work?
This is a flat contract fee, whereas Public Consulting Group who did it prior was percentage-based at nine percent.
Okay, so the flat fee contract, so yes, you do know what that is today, but that's currently, that's in our current fiscal year. And I know we did talk about that um at the um budget committee meeting, um but it's also based on. Um the quote-unquote percentage um um or, or. Cost savings is based on the number of calls that might come in to the city, again, not a good budgeting practice. Um to um based your um what you might be spending on. Um um uh a reimbursement that you are projecting. And so, um I guess what I would maybe suggest that the council consider is that. Um this be something that the, the chief come back to us and include, we're gonna be starting our budget um process here. And the, probably I'm gonna guess the next month or so, um and that's something that um come through, you know. As an ongoing expense that will have an increase to the, the city and at a time when we're seeing. Um sick um costs that we ca- um that we maybe have no control over. Um continue to increase and limits extend, I saw it was in Adams um update again on Friday. Um talked about um the legisla- as, as you've heard me say before, the legislature is gonna continue to. Um look at ways to uh limit property tax increases and those sorts of things. And when we, I, I just have great concerns with us looking at this cost savings approach as a way to. Fund an ongoing expense and so I can't support it today for that reason, but I would support it if we would choose to start it with a new fiscal year. Thank you.
Uh chief, let me ask you, who's the, are we the smallest um full-time department in the metro?
Um by staff or calling?
Oh boy, how about by staff?
By staff, uh boy, we gotta be close.
Okay.
Um the only thing I think is outliers maybe like Polk City.
Well, coincidentally, I'm looking at Polk City's roster of their fire, or on their, their website. Um and they have a fire chief, a deputy chief, a captain, a captain, a lieutenant, a lieutenant. And a lieutenant, um and we have no second command staff, right?
Uh we have Blake Boyle, who's a part-time staff, um he is technically a captain. Um he has helped me out when he could, but obviously not always available and we are not his full-time priority.
Hmm, um I think my, do you know off the top of your head, what about Carlisle?
Carlisle, uh I think they have at least three part-time lieutenants, but I couldn't say definitively, I do know that they have. A formal leadership line.
Okay, alright. I was just curious, I, about smaller departments, if it was unusual, even in smaller departments not to have a, you know, not a. Second um person, you know?
Yeah, uh I couldn't say definitively, but I would bet our farm. That we are the only department that it is just me on a daily basis.
Mike, I would like to note too that uh Polk City has the highest income of all those cities in them, in the state of Iowa, I believe.
That's fair.
I would like to point out that years ago, they did have lieutenant positions in the fire department, paid-on-call, part-time staff. Um so this is not something that is brand spanking new that um this was something that. Was there for a, a while, um and I think my husband got like. An extra dollar an hour to be a lieutenant, so you know, basically, I could buy a pack of gum, you know, woo-hoo.
Which is on my radar too, but not on the discussion for the night.
But you know that, because our department was a little different and, and how it worked, I think there were two or three lieutenants at the time. Um that were paid on-call or part-time, so uh my only comment would be that I would like to see that. Um we word in the, the description, uh paramedic preferred. Or something along those lines, just because I do think that um the right person that comes around. Uh if they're an E M T, great, if they have a lot of experience, but um also with the way that our department is and the expectations of our. Community to have paramedic level service, uh I would like to just see that. Not so that it sticks us to having a paramedic, but that, you know, there is a little bit. Because you did go to the extra schooling, you went through and you, you have maybe a little bit more critical thinking, not that that.
Yeah, I would have absolutely no issues with that, I understand the logic and obviously paramedic is our highest skillset level that we have in EMS, so.
If chief, if hypothetically, um this were. Um created, the position were approved, when are you wanting it, or when, when is it su- to take effect?
Uh essentially, I'd want to put a uh announcement out internally, um we would need to keep, Aaron, I may need your help on this. A minimum of ten days, so I would say we'd probably keep it open for about a month, um see what we get for applicants. Then uh maybe start a uh interview process, maybe a steel assessment center. Which is not uncommon, uh we're looking for higher-level stuff than firefighting, running the scene, putting them through scenarios, stuff like that, so. I would think that you're probably looking at a minimum of a month and a half before somebody could actually get hired.
So that puts us into December, is it? So first of the year, basically?
Alright. For a further discussion? Someone make a motion?
Not yet.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve with, I would like to see the uh paramedic preferred added into the job description.
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Susan Skiris?
Yes.
Michael Libby?
Yes.
Lauren Campbell?
Yes.
Lisa Harms?
No.
Five C, discussion on Sixty-Eighth Street South Reconstruction, AJ.
Uh one follow-up topic from last city council meetings, we talked through ADA accessibility and the impact. To residents on Sixty-Eighth Street during reconstruction. Uh continued to visit with colleagues as well as our contractor on Seventy-Third Street about what they've seen elsewhere as far as accommodations made. Um we've gotten a couple of responses to our letter, it went out to everybody on Sixty-Eighth Street, uh. For one-on-one meetings to, to discuss the impact and accommodations that might be needed, haven't had those meetings yet, but they're scheduled. Uh one option that I've looked at a little bit, uh and brainstormed with Justin on is uh some of these four-by-eight. What textured rubber mats, um this would at least provide a hard surface, um a smoother surface than, than a gravel walkway. For some of the residents that have particular accessibility issues, uh so it wouldn't be the whole length, we'd still be grappling each side of the street that's under construction. Uh but if we've got, and we believe we do have several folks that uh ideally might have a smoother surface there. We could have the contractor install these rubber mats in a flat service, they, the surface, they have an interlocking uh metal component that's fairly low-profile. Uh and get them to uh the portion of the street that's not under reconstruction, just give them a little smoother path there. Uh we probably need about thirty to forty of these mats to get uh from the middle of any given phase to uh the end of the reconstruction site. Uh the cost to make this purchase is gonna be around eleven thousand dollars, uh they should be reusable if we find that they're successful. Um proposing that the city buy them and store them, uh sorry, public works gonna have to clean out a corner. Um and then going forward, if they're successful, again, we could use them on future road reconstruction uh projects if needed as well. Haven't heard of any other cities doing this, I don't know it'll be successful, it'd be an experiment, um but just trying to look at options of, of what we could do to try to meet some needs of residents, so. Welcome any feedback council to have on this, if you want to move forward or not.
Feedback? Council?
We don't have any other, I mean, this is the lowest cost option we've discussed, correct?
Uh compared to alternatives of a golf cart or um maybe trying to construct a sidewalk in advance, which I don't even believe is possible. And Justin and I have talked about it, yes, I think, you know, this is about a low-cost solutions we can get.
When, when do we need to make a decision on this, because we're not. Doing that until next.
Tonight, uh when we put this project out to bid, we would list this as a requirement on the contractor that they level the surface and install these and uninstall these. Uh so we're just kind of getting ready for our bid uh to go out here, probably end of November, December.
When are the conversations with the residents scheduled for?
I believe we have one this week and one next week.
Okay, I would like to know what the needs are before we make an investment in that, just to, I mean, just, it's like we're the. You know, cart's before the horse at this moment, so I think if we can find out that information before we have to make a decision on this, I think I would appreciate that.
Yep, I could include some follow-up information once we've had those meetings.
Other feedback?
I guess, you know, I'm looking, a, a golf cart to purchase is twelve thousand dollars, you know, brand spanking new. I, I mean, that's a, for me, a, a whole bunch of these mats, if. I don't know, that it just seems like a lot of money to be putting out into this. If we don't even know that it's going to be gonna work, I, I'm a little bit leery about. That and especially like Teresa said, we, we don't really even know exactly what we're, we're dealing with. So maybe once we get that figured out a little bit better, we can come up with. Looking at, at other options or looking at what else is, is there for us, um is it even just to, to buy a city golf cart? I, I don't know, but if you can get a used golf cart for eight thousand dollars. And you're able to use it over and over again, the only thing is liability, you know, that type of thing, you know, we're looking at that, but. I- is that a cheaper option that we know is actually successful or?
Rather than, rather than have that discussion about expenditures, probably the first step would find out what the accessibility issues are. And, and whether or not this would help solve that, uh I, I'm worried about golf carts and.
We, we have, we have over the course of the last two open houses interacted with some of these residents, we have a general sense, we just haven't had a one-on-one with them, so. Uh yeah, there's still, I think, more information we can gather from those meetings, but I, I, I think it would be appreciated to have a more level service based off of. The walking needs of, of some of the residents that we've seen. And then to the point of the golf cart, I think you're right, the acquisition of it uh is one cost, but the liability and staffing it or letting a resident. Ride it in the dark on the reconstructed street is probably the more challenging aspect of the golf cart issue.
Yeah, I'm, I'm open to these, I, I, I'm nervous that when it goes to bid, that this is a further complication as part of the. Um the bids that we get, that this is, you know, is the contractor interested in messing with something that they haven't had to do before and. Creating additional barriers, um and also I don't want this to be another thing, taking up space in public works and then. You know, to make space and we turn around and sell on gov deals for pocket change, right, like then, I get that these are reusable, but. I don't, I'm not completely convinced that it, it's the right investment to spend the money on. So you said we don't need to make a decision now, so we can table it for now and. What, when do we need to, to?
I can either bring it back after we've had any one-on-one conversations, or we can rediscover it uh when we are preparing the bid package uh for council's consideration. Uh we just, if you had a clear direction or wanted us to research other options, just want to keep the conversation going, so we don't have to delay. Putting the project out to bid as we try to address the situation, so.
Don't really know what other options to, to research, but if there are other options for us to research, maybe research them.
I wish I had something. Challenging situation.
The um, the mention of the easement, can you tell me more about that, the easement on that property? A tentative offer to, for a temporary easement, and that would be where these mats would?
Uh no, so this is uh regarding the tree conversation we've previously had is the note at the bottom.
Oh, gotcha, yep.
A tentative offer's been tendered and, tendered and accepted.
Okay.
So you'll see that coming in front of you at a future council meeting.
Gotcha, thank you, I mistakenly thought it was part of the above.
Yeah, it was kind of one isolated follow-up.
And that's like the big, long, here provided, yes.
Okay, well, um let council know, please. Alright, further discussion? Alright, hearing none, five D, consideration of A T E engagement letter and terms.
Yeah, so this, um if you recall, at the last meeting, we discussed um moving forward with the A T E litigation and retaining. Um Dentons, uh Mike Richards in particular, um to handle the continued defense on that matter. So this is the engagement letter that they had provided, um he had offered the three hundred dollar per hour rate, which is a reduction of their standard billing practices. And so I've reviewed the remainder of the document and it's all our fairly standard um legal. Uh legal terms, so nothing of concern for me.
Alright, discussion or questions?
Move to approve.
Again.
Roll call.
Susan Skiris?
Yes.
Michael Libby?
Yes.
Lauren Campbell?
Yes.
Lisa Harms?
Yes.
Five E, consideration of resolution number twenty twenty-four sixty, sixty-three, a resolution approving administrator compensation for F Y twenty-five.
Move to approve.
Again. Second.
There's a blank. We just let Adam fill in whatever and move forward.
Okay, so I need, I'll make a motion that we move to approve a 4% increase in Adam's annual compensation.
No second.
There are other boxes?
Yeah. So there's going to be, uh, the percentage wage increase and then also two boxes for if you want to provide a merit bonus and provide any additional PTO.
Cost of living adjustment for social security recipients came in for 2025 at 2.5%, just point of information.
Your, I mean, your annual PTO accrual, you say how much, how many days?
I feel like I have a fair amount of PTO for the contract plus when I'm accrued. I couldn't tell you exactly what the contract states right now. Well, 160 per contract and then 6.8, I want to say, is for years one to three. Is that about right? Yeah.
So am I understanding that we're leaving two and three blank?
You can. Uh, so this resolution was put together based on the last, uh, city administrator annual review.
That's a bad idea.
Right. They, I mean, that was advocated for by that city administrator at the time. So, um, I think our plan was just a 4% increase in salary.
Let's do it. Any, uh, further discussion then?
Um, it's, I have not been around with a, um, high-performing, um, city administrator. Is the annual bonus, the merit bonus, is that something that we've done historically? Does anyone know?
Didn't we take a percentage down and give him a merit bonus? Isn't that how that worked?
It was, that was his request, yes.
Instead of going up the 4%, he was like 2% and then he got a merit bonus and then he added, so I mean, it all added up basically to the 4%-ish. I mean, I'm just.
Yep, it was the same dollar amount.
Yeah.
It was just he took it in cash instead of receiving it over time.
Okay.
And we did not give him the 4%. I was just using that for numbers because it was easier that way, but.
I would be more than happy to take the 4% and no bonus then. Plan to stick around for a while.
I thought you might see it that way.
I have that recorded, so.
Yeah, this is a recorded line.
Father in.
Alright, let's do it. Any, uh, any further discussion on that? Alright, so the, uh, resolution or the motion is the 4% base wage increase.
That could be inaccurate.
Roll call.
Susan Searies?
Yes.
Michael Libby?
Yes.
Lauren Campbell?
Yes.
Lisa Harms?
Yes.
Five F, consideration of the third reading of ordinance number 202408 with regards to design elements for on-premises signs.
Uh, just as a reminder, last council meeting, we waived the third reading for the permanent sign ordinance. Uh, so this is the third reading of the temporary sign ordinance, which adjusts, um, uh, the requirements or lack thereof for commercial businesses to place temporary signs, uh, on their property, subject to the amount of square feet, interior square feet. Uh, have prepared a draft letter to send out to all businesses in Windsor Heights, presuming approval this evening, uh, just to inform them of the change and that they're not required going forward to submit a permit for temporary signs based off of their square footage. Uh, and/or if they would like to exceed that number of temporary signs, they can still go through a permitting process. So, uh, if this passes tonight, plan to get that out later this week or early next week.
Move to approve.
Second. Further discussion? Roll call.
Susan Searies?
Yes.
Michael Libby?
Yes.
Lauren Campbell?
Yes.
Teresa Harms?
Yes.
Six A, Ms. Harms?
I do not have a report. I probably should have lots of reports, but I'll fill you in on the legislative pieces later.
Alright, Ms. Campbell?
Uh, today, Susan and, uh, city staff and I met to talk through, um, the Fall Festival debrief, including Tiffany from the Urbandale Chamber. Um, and we incorporated feedback from vendors, um, and from parade entrance and, um, city staff, and hopefully next year will be even better. Outside of that, next Monday is, uh, the next DART, Reimagine DART working session, um, which should be a lot of fun. That's all I got.
Libby?
I have no report.
Blank chair, Ms. Erin. Joseph, wake up.
Um, so like Lauren said, we had a debriefing today. Um, we've learned from the previous two years. We'll continue to learn from last year. Um, overall, I think we just have a few things to tweak, um, kind of, uh, handle the growing pains. Uh, thank you again to everyone who helps the, the Fall Festival. Lauren and I really appreciate all that you, you did to make it a huge success. I know I'm still kind of recovering from the Fall Festival with my, my brain, so I can only imagine what some of you are dealing with too. See, uh, I sent emails to everyone that still owes for the Windsor Heights merchandise. If you owe, uh, please see Adam and, uh, make a payment. Uh, let's see, I attended, uh, the annual celebration for Catch Des Moines at Glen Oaks, uh, two weeks ago Wednesday. That was interesting. Um, then Friday, October 11th, I attended Metro Waste Authority Employee Celebration at the Science Center. On the 15th, um, Lauren, Mike and I, uh, joined HW CBD at the ribbon cutting. And then on the 16th, I attended a Metro Waste meeting. After the meeting, we discussed how to word signage at the cardboard recycling containers, uh, so that commercial haulers are not able to dump cardboard at our facility. We have a special events, uh, committee meeting on Friday. Uh, we did receive a note from Tracy Beck that she is no longer able to be part of the committee due to, uh, changes in her personal schedule. So thank you to Tracy for being on the, the committee for half a year or year, something like that. Uh, reminder, trick-or-treating is this Saturday. I know that the police and fire department will be out in full force to keep our little ghosts and goblins safe. We appreciate that. I received an email, thankfully, from Jackie with Iowa National Guard. She's working on finding a guest speaker for our event. She's looking for somebody out of Windsor Heights. I said, you can open the spans to Windsor Heights and Urbandale, so we can find a speaker and I don't get more gray hair. Let's see, um, I've received probably about 15 RSVPs from veterans attending the Veterans Day luncheon. The event is November 11th from 11:30 to 1:30 at the Community Event Center. Uh, still looking for volunteers to help with the event between setup, uh, during the event and cleaning up after the event. And then finally, I just want to say thank you to firefighter, paramedic Brett Mercille for his many years of devoted service to the residents of Windsor Heights. It is great to see the professional growth in Mercille from when he started as a young professional to where he is now. Although I am sad to see Mercille move on to another metro agency, I am proud of the paramedic firefighter that he has become, and I wish Mercille much success, must much success as he starts this newest chapter in his fire career. That's it.
Uh, I received a card from a Ms. Maher, a, uh, Des Moines resident who stopped by Colby Park on her way to Aldi. Said it was amazing, really fantastic, and she appreciated the new bike racks on the park and the rehab bebops. We can't take credit for that.
Is it open yet?
Also, thank you for the traffic calming bike treatments along University. Greatly appreciate your support of the biking community. AJ, anything from you?
Nothing.
AJ, I have a question about the Dewali Parade. Do we know any more about that on the 26th?
Yes, I was just looking at the Facebook invites earlier. I think we just shared it on our event to just informationally for residents that might be impacted on the street, although I believe we're also dropping off flyers, uh, to everybody that is on 66th as well. Here.
Do they tell us when this is going to happen? I mean, it's on the 26th, but I'm just curious about the time.
Yep, so the music starts at, uh, 11:30 to 3:30 at Colby Park. The parade proceeds that. I don't see a start time listed there, but I want to say it was 11:00 AM is what we talked about. So it'll start at City Hall.
It's not that far.
No, it's, it's just a half-mile walk now, assuming they don't have anybody stopping and chatting too long, whether throwing out candy. It shouldn't take them too long, 20 minutes, but, uh.
Is Sheriff Kevin Schneider invited? I knew that was coming. Knew it.
Uh, but it does start at City Hall. It'll walk down, uh, 66th down to School Street and then end at the Colby Park parking lot. They've reserved the, uh, portions of the park so they can hold their event that day with some music.
Do we know why Windsor Heights?
We're a parade town, Michael.
Hard at all. That's it.
We're a parade town.
It's a great, you know, I think it's a great, uh, exercise in diversity, so.
I think they just saw all of our special events and thought they'd like to be like us. So.
Yeah, hopefully folks get a chance to check it out. They're hoping to do this annually going forward, so.
I guess I didn't look so, is, are there food trucks or are they doing like food vending? Cause it's during the kind of a lunch hour-ish?
I have not heard any conversation about food trucks. Nate's been, uh, having most of the conversations with them. So I, I've not heard that there's any permits for food trucks submitted yet, but.
Cool. Now motion to adjourn?
Pro moved. Second.
Roll call.
Susan Searies?
Yes.
Michael Libby?
Yes.
Lauren Campbell?
Yes.
Teresa Harms?
Yes.